Seeing as it is 7 o'clock, I would like to call the January 11th, 2022 zoning Board of Appeals meeting to order. Can we have roll call, please, or stand and do the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we have roll call, please?
Yes. Board member Gazund?
Here.
Board member Krug?
Here.
Vice Chair McAlpine?
Here.
Board member McDonald?
Here.
Board member Uller?
Here.
Board member Ward?
Here.
Board member Willner?
Here.
You have a quorum, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair.
Thank you very much. And next up on our agenda is the excuse of absences from our December 13th, 2021 meeting. I believe, if I'm not mistaken, there were some issues with communication with the change of Aaron, and that is the reason for the two folks that were absent from our meeting. So I think we just need a motion to excuse those absences. And if you would like to...
Madam Chair, I'm requesting an excused absence from the December meeting.
Okay, and you were also... Okay. Okay, so we just need to...
Yeah, I'll motion to excuse.
Make a motion and support, and a support for the motion.
I will support.
Perfect, thank you. Next up is the approval of our agenda. It is...
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Do you need to take a vote?
Oh, I'm so sorry.
A roll call vote, or just a vote?
Okay, we'll do a vote, sorry.
Okay. Gazund?
Yes.
Krug?
Yes.
McAlpine?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Uller?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Willner?
Yes.
All right, well, thank you. So those absences have been recorded as excused. Next up now is the approval of the agenda. We have the agenda in front of us. It was made available to the public, and it is here as well at the table for anyone attending in person. We just need a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Support.
The only, the only thing I would request is that we do change the date, the year to 2022.
Madam Chair, I also noticed that item two under Old Business, 2022 zoning board of appeals calendar dates is a mistake. We, I apologize, that was on your last meeting's agenda and was not removed. So if we are already making amendments to it, I would ask that that item be removed.
Perfect. Okay, is that motion and support still stand?
Yes. And support.
I do have one, one other. Absences is spelled wrong on excuse, excuse of absences. I hate to be grammar snob here, but A-B-S-E-N-C-E-S.
Too many Cs.
Yeah.
Yes.
One too many.
All right, so we just have those three revisions, and does the motion and the support still stand?
Yes.
All right, then we'll have roll call to approve the agenda as presented with the revisions we've discussed.
Gazund?
Yes.
Krug?
Yes.
McAlpine?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Uller?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Willner?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Next up is the approval of the minutes from our meeting that was held on December 13th, 2021. Once again, in our packet, we're copy of the, we're, with a copy of the minutes. If anyone has any changes or revisions or additions after reviewing them, we can talk about those now.
Madam Chair, I realize that you in, in the minutes were referred to as chair, and officially, you're the vice chair.
Perfect, make that change then, thank you. With that, that revision being made, is there anything else that we do need to revise? If there is nothing, then we do need a motion to approve the minutes from our meeting of December 13th, 2021.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we'll have a roll call of that, please.
Gazund?
Yes.
Krug?
Yes.
McAlpine?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Uller?
Yes.
Ward?
Abstain.
Willner?
Yes.
McDonald. Thank you. Motion passes.
Okay. Next up, Old Business, it's the matter of electing a new chair and vice chair to the zoning board of appeals. It's something that we do annually, given we have a full quorum and all of our regular appointed members. We can go ahead and proceed with the elections. The first step would be for me to officially resign as vice chair, because we do not have a chair. And from there, we will do nominations, do a vote, and then move on to electing a vice chair.
I'd like to nominate Sue McAlpine as chair.
Support.
And Miles Uller as vice chair.
Support.
So if anyone else have any other nominations? Okay, if there are none, then what we should do is we will vote on each one individually. So we'll first do the nomination for Sue McAlpine to be the chair of the zoning board of appeals.
So a motion by Gazund, supported by Ward. Gazund?
Yes.
Krug?
Yes.
McAlpine?
I don't think so.
I don't think I vote.
Oh, okay.
I'm sorry.
Sorry. McDonald?
Yes.
Uller?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Willner?
Yes.
Motion passes. So the motion for vice chair for Mile, for Miles Uller as vice chair, motion by Gazund, supported by Ward. The roll call, Gazund?
Yes.
Krug?
Yes.
McAlpine?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Willner?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Congratulations.
Thank you. All right, so we will move on to New Business. The first item on our agenda is application PBA 1021. It is for property located at 3679 Royal. The property owner is requesting a dimensional variance request of five feet, six inches from the required 15 feet between dwellings. So if you want to go ahead and give us the background on this?
I would be happy to. So in terms of the background, the parcel at 3679 Royal was created January 2021 by a lot split of 3689 Royal, which was originally an 80-foot lot. The two resulting parcels are compliant with the 40-feet width and lot area and width of the R1D district. However, the resulting property at 3689, the northern property of the subject site, so it's right at the corner, oh, the southeast corner of Edwards and Royal, has a nonconforming side yard setback of four feet, nine inches with the subject site, since the R1D district requires a five-foot side yard setback. And this becomes important as you consider things. So a building permit for a single-family home to be built at the newly-created lot, the subject site, was applied for on March 24th, 2001. The house plan, the house and the plot plan submitted dated February 29th, 2021, complied with all the minimum setbacks and the minimum 15 feet between the proposed house and the existing dwellings to the south and the north. The building permit was later withdrawn, and the parcel was sold to the current owner. The cor, the property owner, Hillen Homes, has applied for a building permit to construct a single-family house with a different footprint than previously proposed, and that home would be nine feet, six inches from the dwelling on the property to the north when 15 feet So this is a dimensional variance, and the standards for review are section, in section 138-606, which says the board of zoning appeals shall not vary the regulations unless it finds findings based on evidence presented to it, in the specific case that, and I will go ahead and, Madam Chair, I can read the, the...
Perfect.
Each one? Would you like me to read them all together and then go through, or read each one and then go through the items I would like you to, that are highlighted in my review?
Why don't you do the latter, I guess? Does it matter how you guys, how she presents it to us?
Why doesn't she read them all at one time?
Okay.
Okay. So, "The need for the variance is due to the unique circumstances or physical conditions of the property. The applicant stated that the need for the variance is due to that nonconforming side yard of three inches. However, in our, in my experience, and I've been a planning consultant for 20 years, usually a nonconforming of such a small dimension is not found to be a unique circumstance that warrants a variance." The second standard is the need for the variance is not the result of actions of the property owner or previous property owners. We would argue that the need for the variance is a result of the actions of the property owner. As you can see in your packets from the plot plan of the previous building application, a previous owner proposed a single-family house that was in compliance with the required separation distance. The third standard is that strict compliance with the ordinance will unreasonably prevent the property owner from using the property for permitted use, or will render conformity with those regulations unnecessarily burdensome. Again, because of the previous plans, we feel that strict compliance with the ordinance will not prevent the homeowner from using the property for the permitted purpose, or render it, render the conformity with those regulations unnec, unnecessarily burdensome. The fourth standard is the required variance is the minimum variance necessary to do substantial justice to the applicant, as well as to other property owners. We in our, and I, in the letter and the review, I've stated that the requested variance is not the minimum variance, especially if you are looking at that the unique circumstance is the nonconforming side yard of the property adjacent to the north. That is a nonconformity of three inches. The applicant is asking for five feet, six inches. Finally, the fifth standard is that the requested variance will not adversely impact the surrounding properties. The requesting, and in our, in our, in the letter, and also you have correspondence today at your desk from the fire chief stating that less than 10 feet, so something, the dimension of, of, that's this small, between houses causes a safety and fire, and a fire hazard for not only the, the house to be built, but to the surrounding properties. And so we ask that you keep that in mind. So again, for the variance to be approved by the zoning board of appeals, it needs to meet those standards that I just listed, based on findings of fact. And we request that you would determine that their unique characteristics of the property, and whether a lesser variance would be acceptable if you look to even approve the variance as presented.
So is the petitioner present? Sir, if you could start by just giving us your name and your address, please?
Patrick Edward Salvatore Ray, 555 Old Woodward, Birmingham.
Okay, and if you want to just give us an overview of...
Sure.
...what you're doing and why you need the proposed variance.
Sure, thank you, thank you. So when we originally submitted the request, it, I would agree with the city that it did read the way you stated that it read, but the uniqueness here is not necessarily caused by the house. It's, the split itself brought the need for the variance to attention. Now, I agree that a home could be built on the property if someone wanted to buy a new home that was, you know, roughly 20 feet wide, which, I mean, if you look at what we have right now in the city of Berkeley, and the units that are being built, and the units that are selling, and, well, any unit, any home, 20 feet would be an unreasonable size in overall width for the house. That being said, the property to the north and the property to the south, in this particular instance, is the unique part to me, not as much the approved split that was done prior, because we are a less than five on one side and just a touch over five on the other. If you look at the survey that we've proposed, we do the nine, nine-nine, or just short of 10 on the one side and the five on the other as normal, but we have the driveway going back to the garage, as we can't put the garage in the front. We've reduced the size of the house now down to the 25 feet in overall width, and did the 25-foot conforming in the front to keep the house further away from the street. You know, I, this is not the first time this has been done, obviously, in the city. I'm sure you're aware that there are houses all over the place that are less than 15 feet from each other. There's some on Oakshire, there's some on Tyler, just nearby. And regarding the fire department's concerns, in new construction, often, even here in Berkeley as well, the application of fire-rated drywall alleviates any requ, any need, really, for distancing. So when we say we have to be five feet off for a garage, and we go to three feet, we then apply a, what we call a type X, or a one-hour fire-rated drywall. This particular dwelling will have fire-rated drywall on both sides. So I, you know, in looking at this, I don't know what the ZBA's ability to grant a slightly lesser variance is without it actually being requested, but in looking at this, there is some forgiveness that could be made on the driveway side, because we do have nine-nine on that side. But I would leave that up to the board, obviously. I don't know if the homeowners have anything to say?
I, I need you to approach the podium, state your name and your address for the record, please, sir.
Yep, my name is Kevin Purry. I currently reside at 319 West Marshall in Ferndale, Michigan. Appreciate everyone listening to this. I know there's a bit of a variance here. Me and my wife are first-time homebuyers, and we're really excited to go through this process. We've been working hard, we've been in the same house for five years, renting, and we're really excited, because we've been saving up to build a home. The 25 feet wide, we thought was perfect. Working with Patrick and Hillen Homes was really great. So, you know, when he said that there was a bit of a discrepancy in the 20 feet, we were kind of working through it, and it got a little tough, you know, just with future family, things like that. So anything, you know, that we could do to make it work for you guys, you know, we're willing to do, so. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. So at this point, we will open it up to the commissioners and see if there's any questions or things that we need to ask.
Madam Chairman? A question, sir. I noticed that there are multiple types of homes on this particular street, in fact, in this particular block.
Yes, ma'am.
And I noticed that there was one house that was probably, oh, six or eight homes down from, on the opposite side of the street, that had the garage underneath, and then the house was on top. And I looked at that, and I thought, wow, that is unusual, but it makes a lot of sense. And it wasn't a terribly wide home. So my question to you is, what was wrong with the previous submitted plan that was then withdrawn that now causes you to come back with a new plan, which requires a variance? What was wrong with that old proposed site plan?
Well, firstly, that plan wasn't submitted by us.
I know.
So I, I didn't see the original plan, so I don't know. As far as Hillen Homes is concerned, we tried to build with the same vernacular that is the rest of the city. I, what I did not want to do, and I'm not making any comments about that house, I, you know, I, whatever anybody wants to do, they can do, but we tried to move in keeping with the rest of the street, and try not to build something that is so dimensionally different than everything else, that our families end up living in something that's so different on the street, and that was pretty much it. That was not really an explored option. It was discussed, but not, I mean, not explored, because it's just aesthetically, they wanted to live in, in Berkeley, you know?
Well, my concern here is that today, we're asking for five feet, six inches.
Yes, ma'am.
And if we grant that, then somebody will be in next month requesting five feet, eight inches, or 10 inches.
Right.
And I'm really concerned about setting a precedent when the lot is large enough to accommodate a house that could be built without variances.
Well, that being said, I, I find myself being the person asking for the 5-5, because others have probably come before me. 3578, 3600 Tyler, 3641 Oakshire, these houses are all closer than 15 feet. They are all new designs. I can't...
And they may have been built a number of years ago and grandfathered in. We don't know.
Well, these, these are new homes. But, yeah, no, and I, and I'm certainly not, not wanting to argue with, with the board, it's your decision, but the idea that we have five feet on both sides commands, you know, a footprint that is only 20 feet wide, and without the garage being in the front, or even with the garage being in the front, that would mean that more than half of your house is over top of the garage, if we did a garage underneath design, or your house is, you know, approximately what, you know, half the size of this room. It makes it difficult to build on, otherwise, for something that's going to fit into the city, or be, be marketable, or, you know, a family like mine to live in.
Well, certainly, we appreciate new families, young families...
Of course, yeah.
...moving into the community. It, it brings life to our community, and so we're happy to have new people. The concern that I have is that by granting this variance, we're, we're establishing a precedent that I don't think we need to establish. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Anyone else have any comments?
Thank you.
Questions?
I did have a question. We have correspondence in here that I'm sure we'll get to during, during the...
Yes.
...later public comment, but the correspondence relates to a property dispute that's being protested as far as the boundary lines of this property. And I'm not sure if we can vote on this until that property dispute is...
Settled.
...resolved.
Correct, and that is something that we, when we get to that correspondence, we will address that as well.
Gotcha.
And that correspondence, just for the record, was just received today, and that's why it was not in our original packet, but I do have it here, and we will talk about it. And I believe, I'm not certain, but I believe the petitioner may be here as well.
I'm unaware of...
It came in this afternoon at 4:45, and I can send, I, I can share those things with...
May I?
Sir, if you would like a copy?
Thank you.
So, once we do get to that point, though, we may...
Okay, sorry.
No, that's okay. We may determine that, given the information that we, we did receive just before 5 o'clock tonight, would preclude us from making a decision at this point until that is determined.
Sure, okay.
Okay.
Okay, anyone else have any comments or questions?
Well, and as, Madam Chair, the, as to the property to the north, which happens to be a corner lot, it appears, it does have a setback that is very close to the border, which makes that next parcel the one they are looking to build on. That's why it, it, the offset is so tight. But also, to, in reference to the firefighter, or to the fire marshal, yes, the homeowners or the builder will, you know, have a fire-rated wall, but the house next door doesn't have that same fire-rated wall, which is the, the issue to surrounding neighborhoods.
Good point.
So, that is all.
Okay, anything else?
Um...
Mr. Eli?
I, I don't think, I don't think this is what you would call ripe. I mean, I, I didn't this, wasn't this presented to us previously in a public comment format?
So this was, this was, this was part of the discussion, but it's my understanding that there has been some new activity on this, correct, or this is information?
I think I'm reading this as saying that there's a property dispute, I'm going to file in Oakland County Circuit, and I haven't yet, but I might. So, I mean, I, I think legally before us, it's legally split lot. I just don't think there's any way we should grant the variance, because it's, I've never seen a case where they, you know, we, we had a, a house proving that a, a house could be built there, and then it's pulled, and they just want to build a bigger one. It doesn't meet us, I don't think it meets a single one of the criteria.
Yes, so I think what we have to do is we'll go ahead and, and close this portion. We do have correspondence that we need to read into the record. We'll see if anyone from the audience is here to comment on this particular item, and then we will go ahead, and our job is to evaluate the request based upon the five criteria, and in order for it to be approved, or denied, it is determined based upon that criteria. So we'll go ahead and close that. What I will do now is, is read the correspondence that we have. So we have a letter dated today. It is from Julia and Bruce Wilhoff, who are residents at 3713 Oakshire. And their letter states that, "This letter is in response to the variance request at 3679 Royal. We ask that you do not allow this variance while Hillen Home, Hillen builds lovely, large homes. Jamming of building design for a much larger lot in this space will set a bad precedent. Space between homes is needed for driveways, utilities, and a little privacy. No one wants a $600,000 home built so close to their neighbor. It is like that Oliver Ferndale, and it is awful. We suggest the builder go back to the drawing board and create a home fit on a narrow lot with no variance." And once again, that was from residents at 3713 Oakshire. And then I will go ahead, here's one more we have, that was dated today, from Alan Cowie, who is a resident at 3678 Royal. To whom it may concern, in reference to the above application for a dimensional variance, I am not in favor at this time. The proposed structure is clearly too big for the size of this lot. A setback reduction from the existing homes of approximately 37% is far too much. This builder needs to have his or her architect amend the design of the new home to fit within and adhere to the current city Berkeley, city of Berkeley requirements. The current zoning requirements have been in place for a reason, and this proposed structure grossly exceeds the lot limits. A home that fits the current city zoning requirements and is similar, is stature to the homes on the block would be more acceptable and appreciated." And then also, I, I will read into the record the correspondence that we did receive from Pete Kelly, who is the fire inspector. And it was addressed to Megan, and it said, "You have inquired about a request to reduce the required separation between residential structures. My position from a life and property safety standpoint is to absolutely maintain the required separation. Allowing any reduction in the separation requirement increases the likelihood of a structure fire involving multiple buildings, as it, as is not uncommon in some nearby municipalities. It is very rare here, in significant part due to the distance between structures. The present case you indicate has a three-inch nonconformity involving lots, but from the past. This inconsequential compared to us allowing a new hazard to be created. If alternatives such as a non-combustible construction or fire suppression were offered, I might be inclined to reconsider, but to create a hazard when none exists would be negligent and unconscionable." And once again, that was from the fire inspector, Pete Kelly. And then we also have correspondence from Janice Salee that was received today. Should we read this whole thing?
Before you do, may I comment one thing? Can we formally table?
Yes, absolutely.
All right. I want, I want to present this to legal before a decision is made by the board, because I know that Hillen will have... I know that Hillen will have to respond to a temporary restraining order. So, we'll have to do that, but before a decision is made precluding us, precluding us from coming back before the board in the one-year timeframe usually required, I'm assuming that's the same here in Berkeley, if we table, that gives us the ability to come back and re-present, which I think is necessary.
Madam Chair, while the applicant has stated that, you've opened the public hearing, so I would say that you don't necessarily need to read that correspondence, but you need to allow...
Allow the people to speak? Okay.
Right, and then after that, that closed, then you could entertain a motion to table if that's...
Perfect. Okay, so we will go ahead and proceed on that.
Okay.
There is this letter here, but I believe you are the author of this letter, so I would invite you to come up to the podium, as we've now opened the public portion for comments. If you could also state your name and address for the record.
My name is Janice Zelay. I live at 3675 Royal Avenue, Berkeley, Michigan. I am the resident owner of 3675 Berkeley since April of 1993. My property has been certified as a National Wildlife Federation Wildlife Backyard Habitat for decades. It is my understanding in the last 12 months, the City of Berkeley approved a lot split and new building construction plans for the properties located at 3679 Royal, which is currently a vacant lot and undeveloped site, and 3689 Royal, which was the parent lot with the original 1921 house. These properties adjacent to my property to the north. The property of 3679 is immediately adjacent to my property, and the property of 3689 abuts the property at 3679 Royal to the north. As I explained to Aaron Tsukkow in an email on August 25, 2021, and in great detail at our meeting on September 9, 2021, that I was protesting the initial lot split as it violated the requirements of the Michigan Land Division Act, NCLA 560.109, and the city schedule regulations. As I mentioned in my brief verbal presentation at the zoning board's August 10, 2021 meeting, and the written protest, the splitting of the lots at 3689 Royal did not meet the required setback requirements on the north lot. And most importantly, I am disputing the property lines between the proposed 3679 Royal and my house at 3675 Royal, particularly since I have a valid adverse possession claim of approximately four feet of the front section, the south section of the front yard of 3679, where my front retaining wall garden bed established in 1995 exceeds the property line between 3675 Royal and 3679 Royal. Based on my valid adverse possession claim, the property located at 3689 Royal was not the required 80-feet lot to be split into the minimal required 40-foot lots under Berkeley's Schedule of Regulations for Zoning District R1D. I am respectfully requesting the zoning board stay this proceeding until my adverse possession claim is resolved. Under the proper jurisdiction of the Oakland County Circuit Court, I have secured my expert civil engineer and land surveying firm that will conduct my certified boundary survey in January, February, 2022, which is an estimated 30 to 45 days processing. I will be filing my adverse possession lawsuit in Oakland County as soon as I receive the necessary supporting survey. If the zoning board proceeds and approves any construction building at 3679 Royal, I will consider filing a temporary restraining order and, in Oakland County Circuit Court, and will pursue additional damages, costs, and attorney fees as a result of the continued violation of my property rights and entitlements to use and quiet enjoyment of my property, including that four-foot strip at issue. I request this board to allow my claim for the critical property area to be decided before action of any zoning variance, which later may be proved futile or may have to be undone. A little background on the situation. On January 16, 2020, Kim, David and Kim Sandoval purchased 3689 Royal for $3,555,000. On the closing day, they relisted that home for sale at $397,000, indicating their intent to split that lot from the adjacent lot at 3679 into two separate lots and retain the garden lot to be built upon. At that time, I contacted Berkeley Building Department to protest this proposed split, and was informed by Kim Anderson, building clerk, that the Sandovals had not submit a lot split request for the city, and therefore I could not file a protest for a hypothetical lot split. As Ms. Anderson, as I asked Ms. Anderson to notify me if any lot split or building construction filings concerning 3679 or 3689 Royal were made in the future. And it should be noted that I'd never heard from Ms. Anderson from early 2020 until June 9, 2021, which is after the lot split, and constructions plans had been, apparently been approved. The Sandovals had dropped the price, asking price of 3689 Royal numerous times before eventually delisting the property in March 2020 at the start of the pandemic. During the pandemic moratorium, construction moratorium, the Sandovals continued to update and renovate 3689 Royal, and in June 2020, they moved their family into the home.
Ma'am?
Yes?
We do have a five-minute time limit, but I do want to make sure, and I will assure you that this is going to be part of the public record and will be available.
Are you sure? It wasn't part of August?
It will be part of the public, it will be part of our minutes in our packet, and we will make sure that they represent that.
All right, all right, then I will get to my protest section.
You have one minute to wrap up your comments.
All right. Then we'll go to the basis to my review. The initial lot split of 3689 Royal should not have been granted by the city, and the parent parcel was not the required 80 feet under the Michigan Land Division Act, since I have established a quiet title in my adverse possession claim of approximately four feet of that south section of 3679, where my front retaining garden bed established in 1995 exceeds the property line. Since the Sandovals purchased that property, I have been trying to assert my rights and entitlements, and lodged numerous complaints to code enforcement, to which the city staff and officials have ignored, delayed, disregarded, or hid during the Berkeley's November 21 city elections. Since my meeting with the former community director on September 9, I have secured my engineer and surveying firm that will conduct my boundary survey, have secured legal counsel who will be filing my claim as soon as I receive the necessary survey. I have more than sufficient evidence to establish the existence of my 27-year-old retaining wall bed and the continued maintenance of that four feet of 3679 Royal, well beyond the 15-year statute of limitations.
Okay, ma'am, I do, I do have to ask that, we move on to see if there's anyone else, but we do have this, we've provided it to the petitioner as well, and I think we have an idea where this is going to...
Yeah, you understand, well, and since I was here in August as well.
But I think we have an idea of where this is going to, to move forward to, so I will ask that if there's anyone else in the audience who would like to speak on this issue, sir, as an alternate, we can't have you speak.
I was told I could.
No.
Is that in the bylaws?
Yeah, we can't, yes. No, the reason being is because if you do have to sit, then you have, you have participated as a resident versus a board member, so, okay. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak on this matter? Sir, if you can approach the podium and give us your name and address for the record, please?
My name is Rocky Huddleson. I live two doors down from my neighbor 3651 Royal, and I agree with the fire inspector. It'd be a shame if something happened and we had a disastrous fire, so I'm against this proposal. I voted no in, in a paper that I sent in.
All right, if there is, I do think, I'm sorry, I do think there was one more, no, sorry, good, okay. If there's no one else in the audience who wishes to speak on this, I will close this portion of the public hearing, and I will ask the board that we do entertain the petitioner's request for tabling this, this motion, so we would need a motion to comply with his request to table a decision on this matter.
I'll make the motion to table this matter.
And then we just would need a support? Perfect. If we can have roll call, please?
Bazund?
Yes.
Prug?
Yes.
McAlpine?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Euler?
No.
Ward?
Yes.
Willner?
Yes.
Motion passes six to one.
So, we will, that has then tabled this item. You can figure out where you stand legally, the property, and go from there, and then if you desire, you can come back and, and ask for a variance, whether it's this, this or any other one.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, up next on the agenda is application PVA 1121, 1490 Franklin. And there are two parts to this particular request. The first is they are appealing the interpretation of whether or not this is a appropriate use of home occupation. And second of all, a use variance as to whether or not they are allowed to include a federally licensed firearm dealer as a home occupation. So, if you want to go ahead and give us the background on this, please?
Absolutely. So, the applicant is appealing a decision by the city manager that the definition of the home occupation in the zoning ordinance does not include a federally licensed firearm dealer. And party to that, as the chair stated, is requesting an interpretation of the definition of a home occupation. Also, per advice of the city's council, this was also noticed as an application for a use variance. We recommend that you only look at that part of the case if you affirm the decision of the city manager. In the review, you'll see the uses that are allowed in the R1D district, which this site and the surrounding sites are zoned. Home occupations are allowed as an accessory use to the single-family detached dwellings. I'm going to read the, the definition of a home occupation, since that's central to the decision to the case. An occupation, so the definition in Article II of the Berkeley zoning ordinance is "an occupation or profession customarily carried out by an occupant of a dwelling unit as a secondary use, which is clearly incidental to the use of the dwelling unit for residential purposes. There shall be no exterior display, other than one non-illuminated nameplate, which is no more than two square feet in area which may be attached to the building. No stock and trade or commodity sold shall be kept on the premises. Nursing homes, tea rooms, tourist houses, beauty parlors, retail businesses, or trade shall not be considered home occupations." In terms of the background, city records for 1490 Franklin show that it was built as a bungalow in 1955. The applicant has stated in his application that city staff in 2014 signed off on the alcohol, tobacco, and firearms license for Wolverine Armory, which is what the home occupation is known as, as well as for renewal in 2017. At the time when this review was written, there was no record in the city, no, there was no record in the city, record in the city records about that approval. And then also, but the applicant has since submitted their full application, which was in, which was some portions redacted, which was in your packet. In 2018, then Community Development Director Tim McGlean restricted a business permit for similar home occupation at 2588 Sunny Knoll. In that determination, the city clearly articulated that for a firearms business to be considered compliant with the local zoning as a lawful home occupation in a single-family zoning district, there can be no on-site sales of firearms, no manufacturing, no firearms display or showroom on-site, no clients on-site, and the home occupation must be strictly incidental to the primary residence as a home. In the review letter, you also see that there were two other federal firearm licenses in the city at that time, per the ATF, the Wolverine State Armory, so the applicant tonight, and Paragon Arms, which was at 1406 Catalpa. Again, we looked at the building permit files for each, the property files for each address, and didn't see anything in the city records. But we want to emphasize that all those license sign-offs were done by the city before that 2018 decision. In December 2020, the building department received an email from the ATF Field Division regarding a potential zoning violation in regard to the Wolverine State Armory. Then in April 2021, the ATF informed the city that they were in a position to renew that license, and, but that would depend on whether the city approved the business being conducted. And then on November 10, city manager Matt Baumgartner sent a letter stating that since the business includes in-person purchase and transfer of ownerships, that the Wolverine State Armory is not permitted as a home occupation. So, you were asked, you were being asked to, as an appeal to that decision. So, that's your first order of business. And with, along with that becomes, comes a home, interpretation of what a home occupation is based on that, based on that definition. Want to emphasize that if, the appeal to the decision is linked to this case, but if you make an interpretation of the home occupation, that affects all future cases with home occupations. However, if going forward, you do choose to rule on a use variance, and that use variance is granted, that use variance runs with the subject's site. So, it's unique to that site, but it runs with the site, not the ownership. So, any future owners would be able to have the same, that same use variance as the applicant, who's the property owner tonight. The standards for review are a little different, and again, you're going to have two separate decisions. For appeal interpretation, you would look at Section 138-621, and it states that the, an appeal may be taken to the zoning board of appeals by any person, office, board, bureau, agreed by the decision of the zoning officer or the planning commission. And in this case, it's the applicant, Steve Nowak, is appealing the decision of the city manager, who is acting as the zoning officer. You, the zoning board of appeals, may affirm, reverse, wholly or in part, or modify the order requirement and decision or determination of the zoning officer. After the public hearing, the board must reach a decision within 90 days. And so, that's a difference from what you usually have with a use variance or a dimensional variance. Usually, there's not a window that requires you to make a decision at that point after the public hearing, so wanted to note that. The key question of the home occupation is whether this is really, whether this is a retail use. The applicant stated that no items are purchased or traded on the premises, although there's conflicting information from the ATF. And in terms of that, they have to come to the home to fill out required paperwork, including a background check, and then pick up the firearms at the home, since federal law prohibits the licensee and shipping from arms. While it's clear that material is stored on-site, it's unclear if the firearms are picked up at that address. I also want to emphasize, this is... I also want to emphasize, this is not about this particular use. It's about what is a home occupation, and what makes a home occupation retail. So, and to emphasize also that your home occupation definition in Berkeley's zoning ordinance is very strict. I, you know, I've worked in dozens of communities, and I've seen the home occupation be, it's very, it's different from community to community. But that's the definition that you are looking at tonight, and whether the circumstances of this particular business is a home occupation. And it really does key off whether it's to no stock and trade, commodity sold on, in the commodity sold on site, and then looking at those other types of businesses that are saying that they shall not be considered home occupations. If you choose to go to, to look at the use variance, which again, if you, I would say that you would only do if you affirmed the decision of the city manager. That is like the case you heard last month, and there are four standards on those. Whether the building or land can be reasonably used for the uses permitted by right or by special permit in the current zoning district. Again, this is an accessory use, so it can be reasonably used as a single-family home. Second standard is the need for the variance is due to unique circumstances or physical conditions of the property. We haven't seen any evidence of there's unique circumstances or physical conditions of the property, such as in the case that you heard last month, where it was a use variance for a duplex. And there were many things about the building itself and the property itself that created use circumstance that, that could only be used as a duplex use. The proposed use will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. In our, in our letter, we found that that, that standard is met. In fact, you would see in the correspondence that was received, a lot of people were unaware of this use in their neighborhood. Also, the need for the variance is not the result of the actions of the property owner, the previous property owners. That's the fourth standard. And then, you know, we expressed in our letter that the need for the variance is a result of the desire of the property owner to continue to operate this business as a home occupation. Be happy to answer any questions. I realize that it's a complicated, unusual case.
Okay, so just to make things very clear, what we are going to do first is determine if there is, if the appeal should be granted based upon the interpretation of what a home business is, based upon the ordinances that we have here.
Right, and I think you would go through both of those decisions, or one or the other, after you hear, having, hearing from the applicant and having a public hearing.
But I just want everyone to be clear that that's, we're going to discuss that part of this first. And depending upon the outcome, we'll determine where we go next. Does anyone have any questions?
I have a question.
Mr. Euler?
I'm not clear on, so reviewing the zoning officers', Mr. Baumgartner, in this case, right, his decision, but I'm not clear on the standard of review. Like, does he have to be like clearly wrong? Is it just like 50.1%? I mean, like, because it seems like there's kind of like hazy factual disputes going on either way here. And maybe we're, I guess we're supposed to make factual determinations, but I just, I'm not clear on how much deference we're supposed to give to his decision.
There are really not, I think you are correct in that there are not specific standards, and not a lot of guidance.
Just do whatever we want.
In the zoning ordinance. I wouldn't say that, but really to look at, you know, going back to Mr. McGlean's, how he sketched out why that was, why that license was restricted, and does that meet the definition of, that's in the, in the zoning ordinance? Because this is a similar, you know, a similar home occupation, and inherently it's a retail use. Also, the applicant may provide some information that wasn't provided to the city manager tonight, so that could be, that you could look at. But you don't necessarily need to make the findings of fact and the appeal, and ruling on the appeal that you do need to do on a use variance.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions? Ms. Ward?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Megan, so what we're doing is we're either affirming or denying the zoning officer's decision, which is the city manager tonight. And then the second part is to determine what a valid usage is for home occupation.
Can I just?
Sure, that's why I'm asking the question.
You are affirming, reversing.
Right.
Or modifying Mr. Baumgartner's order.
Okay.
Decision.
Okay.
Then, if you affirm his decision, you're essentially saying to the applicant that denial that he sent you is valid.
Correct.
Based on our interpretation of the zoning ordinance. The applicant then has applied for, and again, it was based on your city's attorney saying to notice it also as a use variance, because that is another avenue for the, for the business owner to seek, to legally conduct this business. So if you affirmed, if you affirmed his decision, then you've essentially said, you've agreed with the, the answer of no. And then you would need to look at the use variance and say whether you would grant that or not. And that, in that instance, on the use variance, it would be very important to make clear findings of fact.
Thank you.
Based on the four standards.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Okay, if not, I will ask the petitioner to come forward and to please name their, state their name and address for the record, and then just give us the background on your business and why you believe that you should, we should overturn Mr. Baumgartner's decision.
Thank you. My name's Steve Nowak, 1490 Franklin, Berkeley, Michigan, 48072. I'd like to make this appeal, for one, I never actually spoke with Mr. Baumgartner regarding this issue. So he never had any information, information directly from me. I spoke with Aaron Schluto and Dan Turbreck, Mayor Dan Turbreck. Just a little history on the business. We originally applied for manufacturing, which when we were made aware of this issue, which we, that would be a type seven license. At that time, Amy Vanson, I believe, was director of zoning. She denied that for manufacturing with the ATF for type seven and was informed us. And then also Mayor Dan Turbreck, or Mayor Pro-Tom Dan Turbreck, informed us if we went for a type one, which is dealer, we would be granted the, the use. We did that. I have included in the forms my initial ATF application. It states in there that it is a single-family dwelling. And for that to be approved, director of zoning for the city had to sign off with the ATF, which at that time was Amy Vanson. Again, Dan Turbreck was also aware. And then it also states within the initial application that all of this was sent to the chief of police to be made as, made aware as well. So approximately seven years ago, all this information and the details of the business were made known to everyone involved within the city that needed to be involved. In regards to the business itself, we have no signage, there's no street parking, there's no, or business hours. There's no inventory at all, there's no showroom. Everything is kept in one small area, contained safely in the basement. We essentially facilitate paperwork, federal paperwork, and storage of items. Many of these items come to us, and paperwork that we facilitate can take upwards to 15 months to process. So we, in intensive purposes, are a storage facility. A lot of items come in and immediately get shipped out. Federally, some items do have to get picked up in person. But again, as you said, some correspondence came in, the majority of people had no idea we're even a business. There's no, nothing changed within the physical structure of the home, the dwelling at all. The primary use is my personal home and dwelling. So if you have any questions regarding any of this, I'd be happy to answer.
Okay, Mr. Euler?
So, and I, I'm not, I guess I'm just not 100% understanding. So like, if I wanted to buy a gun, could I buy a gun from you?
Legally, you could. We facilitate third-party purchases. So all these items are already purchased by.
What does that mean exactly? I mean, third-party purchase?
All of our, all the items that we currently have, they've already been purchased. There's no purchase of actual firearm. The transaction for any of the items has already been taken place, usually out of state.
So who, can you kind of like flush that out for me? So somebody and, somebody living around in this area has bought a weapon from somebody in.
Could be anywhere in the country.
Kansas or something?
Anywhere, yes.
And then the business in Kansas sends it to you?
Legally, they have to.
And then you help facilitate the paperwork?
Paperwork.
And then?
And depending on said item, it has to stay in storage, secure storage.
Who lives around here then comes and gets the weapon from you?
Occasionally. Sometimes they'll come, or they'll have us facilitate another transfer to somewhere that's closer to them. For instance, a lot of times we'll do the paper, some background NFA items, National Firearms Act items that I mentioned. They have to be in storage while paperwork is processed, which can be, again, upwards of 15 months. And they can't, it's very highly regulated. So these items, once transferred to us, have to stay with us for that time until either a Form Four or Form Three is transferred.
So let's say somebody who just, in the area, just says, I would, you know, I want to buy a rifle, just as an example. And, you know, you could go to, I don't even know if they have like Field and Stream or wherever, you know, they could go there. Or could they just call you?
They could, but we don't have inventory, we don't carry items.
So what would you do then, if somebody called, you would?
Tell them to purchase it somewhere. And if they needed to facilitate the paperwork, we could do that for them. But we're not ordering items for them.
Okay.
So we technically don't have any retail, we're not handing money, receiving money for these items.
But the inventory is kept.
We don't actually have.
Sorry.
Sorry.
That's okay.
So I, what I'm understanding is it's not really, you're trying to say it's not really inventory, it's somebody else's inventory?
Someone's personal item technically while they're waiting for paperwork, essentially.
That they've bought from somebody, some other gun dealer?
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, it could be from a big box store, it could be from an individual. It's just, that's how you legally have to process this paperwork and transactions with a third-party individual.
You don't have inventory, you don't have guns there that somebody could just say, I want to buy?
No.
And you're saying that if somebody says, I want to buy a gun, you would say, well, you have to find somebody to sell you that gun?
Correct. Even if I wanted to, honestly, I can't even get, wouldn't be, even be able to get anything to sell to an individual with the state of the industry right now. But that's the business model, is facilitating this federal paperwork.
I don't want to hog the question anymore.
Pardon me?
I don't want to hog the question anymore.
So, so you're?
What, Mr. Wilner?
All right, so the commodity is still on the premises, right? The gun, the guns are on the premises?
Yes, while waiting for paperwork. The, our commodity in this is the actual action of the individual completing the paperwork, which is a signature.
Right. So it's, I thought it's pretty clear that no items are to be purchased or traded on the premises in order to meet the.
Again.
So if you're, if somebody comes there to pick it up, they're actually?
Again, I'm, there's nothing, no transaction for the actual firearm or accessory, what it may be, for us. That's already completed and done. The only thing we're dealing with, zero retail, just the paperwork.
Well, you might be splitting hairs, I guess. I mean, they are being traded there on the premises. They may not have bought it there, but they're.
Again.
Hanging up?
Yeah.
That is my interpretation of trade. I'm not trading anything for the actual item, I'm just facilitating.
You don't get paid a fee?
For the paperwork, not for the actual item itself. It's a service and not retail. Sorry.
Can you tell me more about what happened, is Amy originally that you dealt with?
Amy Vanson, yes.
So, so that's not clear to me. So what happened?
So we originally applied for manufacturing, as I stated. And after reviewing this ordinance, we were informed that we couldn't complete any kind of, type of manufacturing on premises, which it wasn't the standard manufacturing, as you might think, it was just kind of piecing items together. We had no qualms with that, and just switched our license per Amy Vanson and Dan Turbreck's recommendation to a type one, which was dealer, which in our business model is facilitating federal paperwork and also receiving and shipping of items.
Do you have any paper trail of your original interactions with Amy?
The only thing I have is our original application to the ATF, which was approved. They have to conduct interviews with the city. And as well as the, I mean.
You didn't email Amy, you didn't?
I did everything in person and on the phone. The last time I had a correspondence, correspondence with her on the phone, she informed me that she gave the ATF approval, which hence, which is why we were approved originally in 2015. And she told me good luck. I won't forget that, because it was such a long process. After getting denied the first time from Ms. Vanson for manufacturing, it took us approximately two and a half years to be approved. And that was the last time we spoke, and then she left the city of Berkeley. And this issue was not brought up again until our, every year, every three years, we have to renew for our FFL. And the ATF occasionally, for those three-year re-use, will come and do an inspection, which we pass with fine colors. And during that inspection, they always contact the city as well, which then they spoke with Aaron Schluto and started this process, as we see today. But we've been in business now for seven years without a review.
On an average day, how many guns do you have on the premises?
On an average day?
Yeah, like during the, like, so we're trying to, like, comments over there saying like, well, it kind of sounds like you're splitting hairs, and maybe this is inventory. And I see what you're saying about you're really doing the paperwork.
Yeah.
And I think that could be, you could make sense of that in a different context, like, you know, an agent or something. But how many guns are there?
Everything we have fits in a safe. I'd say it's five by four by four.
So what is the number, what is the number?
I mean, let's say, in the past month, I'd say there might have been 10.
Is that a lot, or is that?
That's very little, yeah.
Is that average? I mean, is that?
Yeah, that's because of the holiday, seeing things seem to have gone up a little bit, but that's, the only time there was a very large spike was during COVID. And that's just because of the industry and people purchasing.
So in seven years overall, you've had an average of 10 guns on, in your particular safe, in your basement?
Firearms, yes.
Okay.
Again, that fluctuates, but I'd say that would be an average.
Okay, so Mr. Wilner, are you good with your comments?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll go to Ms. Ward, and then I'll go to Ms. Bazund.
Is this your primary business?
No. This is not my primary job, no.
And secondly, you said items are shipped and received at your home for storage purposes only.
Correct.
Are you an FFL holder?
Yes, my license should be included in there. The FFL is, I believe is what the whole variance is discussing here.
It's interesting.
I've been FFL for seven years, including the special occupations tax for the NFA, which we've been approved for every year. Every, every pre, reapproval, we've had no issue with the city or federal.
Okay, your application for a federal firearm license on copy?
I believe it was approved March 15th, 20, or.
But it asks one question, it says, do you hold a federal firearms license? And you checked no.
That's because that was our first application. So we did not at that time, that, that's when the ATF came, did their inspection, talked with the city. I did not have one at that time, so that was my first application.
Okay, so this is an old application?
That is my very first, yes.
Okay.
Since then, I've received, so it's every three years, so this would be the third reevaluation.
Okay.
And the last one, which was three. And the last one, which was three-
So you are an FFL holder?
Yes, I am an FFL holder.
Okay. And-
And have been for seven, over seven years now, I believe.
It said here, how many of the firearms are picked up at your home, at your address?
It varies. This week, I had one.
Okay. Do you have a retail location?
No.
Where people can come?
There's no other brick and mortar.
Okay. In the information that Megan has supplied to us, it says, more information from the applicant as to the process of where and when paperwork is filled out and firearms picked up is needed to determine if the process differs from the typical federal firearms license.
Nothing of my license differs in any way. We just, again, for zoning purposes, we don't store retail. We don't have display. There's no signage, no inventory.
Okay.
The license itself doesn't differ in any way.
Well, the license allows you to have, to use UPS and FedEx to ship to you, to ship firearms to you.
Anyone can technically ship FedEx and UPS firearms, pistols included.
Yeah.
Even non-licenced.
US Mail does not permit handguns.
US Mail permits long guns, not pistols.
Right. Yes.
Do you have any other questions, Mr.?
No, thank you.
All right, Mr. Kazan?
What is the chain of custody when these items are shipped in or shipped out? I imagine there has to be, I'm worried when, when, when my insulin pump supplies are shipped to my house because it contains needles. These are firearms.
It's the same throughout the entire industry. No matter where or who you are, it's handed off to either UPS, FedEx, or USPS.
Okay. But when, like, when stuff is delivered, it's not sitting on your porch?
Oh, no. Everything is sent and received by, you have to be someone, a licensee with, over the age of 21 and over, to receive.
Okay.
In person. Nothing is ever left anywhere. That would be against the law.
And do you have children in your home?
No.
Okay.
I have a couple of questions.
Go ahead.
If you don't mind.
Nope.
Paperwork that you have to do, obviously, that's, that's your business.
Correct.
The exchange of one item has to be paperwork done right by federal law, I'm assuming.
Background checks and-
Yep. And then, then the item is passed on to the person who completes that paperwork.
Correct.
That paperwork has to be done in your presence, correct? With that person?
Yes, it has to be signed by the person, yes.
Okay, so-
Most of, especially during COVID, especially with Form 4s, for instance, we'll send out a questionnaire and everything's done online, completely filled out. It requires a signature, for instance, and then-
It has to be done in your presence?
Signature does, yes.
Right. So in other words, you and the person that are receiving the item that you are transferring for them has to be done in person with you?
Yes, the signature has to be done in person.
So that person always comes to your, this location?
Unless I'm shipping out again, yeah.
Okay. So unless it's just a double transfer, you're just shipping again?
Yeah.
Okay.
Correct.
Second thing is, you were, there was a mention, and pardon me if I missed it. You were at one point considering manufacturing of ammunition, is that?
No, not ammunition. We were considering manufacturing of actual firearms, particularly, particular rifles. That was prior to our approval of our Type 1, which is dealer, is technically, Type 1 is a dealer, which we have and have had for seven years now. We originally wanted to manufacture, as I stated, rifles. Basically, it was just building of parts that were already purchased for mother cupcakes.
So it was anything to do with ammunition?
No, nothing to do with ammunition. We don't, we've never housed ammunition. It's just-
Right.
Yeah, ever.
Okay. And then to the board, I was just, I had a, I had a question. So if I understand this correctly, home business in Berkeley, let's say, they, on Amazon, they buy balloons and are sent to the house by, you know, Amazon. And then that person resells online and then ships out by Amazon these balloons. Is that, by the ordinance that I'm looking at, that would be a violation of the ordinance, correct?
Or for instance, an Etsy store, other online stores of that nature.
I mean, are they holding commodities and trading commodities? And so that technically would be, again, a violation of this ordinance?
As a home occupation.
Right.
And then somebody who would want to participate in that business would need to find a storefront or something in a, in a zoning district where it would allow that type of use, which might be the office or any one of your Coolidge Woodward. You know, you've got a variety of different zoning districts, but it, it wouldn't be a home occupation.
Anyone else have any comments or questions?
I guess I have one additional. So this, by looking at this, sir, it seems like there was some sort of anonymous complaint, heavy foot traffic, so on and so forth. Do you know anything about that?
No, I've not heard anything about that whatsoever. That was not brought to my attention.
It's in the packet. You know what I'm talking about?
Which packet?
The one that was provided to us.
And provided to you as well.
It was online and I let you know about it, but I didn't think-
Somebody made anonymous complaint to the ATF, which forwarded it to the city. It says, this referral is being sent to you due to the discovery of a potential violation of your zoning ordinance, yada, yada, yada. An anonymous source described a regular and heavy amount of customer traffic to the location, where they advised that in-person gun sales are taking place.
It's-
So you dispute?
I do. It's extremely low. The individuals park in the driveway. As mentioned, it's been an average of maybe one a week, even less, I think. There may have been one in all of November. So there's definitely not heavy traffic.
Were there confrontations with your neighbors about this? I mean-
No one's ever, in fact, there's a few neighbors here. And I've never had any issue. No one's ever said anything to me. In fact, I don't even know how an individual would know there'd be firearms legally to leave the premises. And when they come in, they're boxed. When they come out, they're boxed, usually in unmarked cardboard boxes that, you know, they're shipped in. So I, for someone to know that they're firearms, I don't know. And the frequency is very infrequent. I don't know how they'd know that. We are listed on Google, so anyone could Google us and find out that the business exists, but-
Mr. Willner, do you have any other?
Um, I might have a follow-up in a second now.
Okay, go ahead.
And just to follow up with the petitioner, that the, I do have an acquaintance who does the very similar thing that you're, you're currently doing. But his zoning in his neighborhood, and I believe that's Livonia, has a very similar type situation where everything he does as far as transaction paperwork, he has to actually leave his home and, you know, wherever they meet and do the transaction there.
We specifically adhere to the ATF's rule that, that has to be done where the address that your license is at. So actually leaving that-
Is, is against-
Is against the ATF.
Okay. So my acquaintance, when I'm not going to name names, he is definitely doing something not right, correct?
Yeah, it has to be done legally. Federally, it has to be done.
So that's why you have to do this at that location?
Yes, the address that's listed on the FFL itself, it should be in the packet, is the 1490 Franklin. And legally by ATF, ATF federal rules, it has to be done at that premises. There are the gun shows, but we opted out immediately to do any of those. Just not interested in that whatsoever.
Do you have another follow-up, Mr. Willer?
Have you ever held yourself out to be a gun store?
Oh, I'm sorry?
Have you, have you ever held yourself out to be a gun store? Like in advertising, online?
I mean, it's listed, I'm sure, on Google and probably the website is Gun Sales, Transfer Services. We, we don't do the sales. We're strictly transfer. That's the only thing we've done for ages.
So how would it come up on Google that way?
Oh, I mean, there's only so many options you can pick.
It's not from you, in other words, like, you're not?
No, well-
This is my business partner.
Well, I'm sure he's going to comment, so that's, yeah, I'm fine.
I do have a question, actually. So in preparing for the meeting, I did obviously look up your business name and your Facebook page came up.
I don't have a Facebook page. Oh, you have the business Facebook page?
Yes. Which, right here, it's, you are general information, 749 people like this, 765 people follow this, eight people have checked in here, and it states that you are an outdoor equipment store.
Correct. Again, there's only so many options you can choose from.
But if you manage this page and this is your page-
I actually don't manage the page.
Then who is actively posting on this page? Because there are, there are posts in the last, I could look it up again.
I, I don't even have Facebook myself, so it's either been my business partner or a friend.
Evan Boron. I reside 13691 Winchester Street in Oak Park. I am co-owner of Wolverine State Armory. The classifications that you're referring to are limited by the platform. So when we built the page and the dropdown menu gave us options, you know, transfer service wasn't an option, so we picked the closest thing to what we do in the description. And on, I believe, Google, it might say gun store. On Facebook, it might say outdoor equipment store, but that is not representative necessarily of what we actually do.
Okay. I just find this very misleading, given this is your page and it clearly says outdoor equipment store, gun store, outdoor and sporting goods company.
Again, if FFL transfer was an option, I would have selected that, but it was not, so I picked-
Couldn't you also have had the option of not putting store on this?
I suppose.
Okay.
We have people email constantly asking for items. In fact, today I had someone asking if we had ammunition and a specific pistol. I informed them that we do not carry inventory and to give them recommendations of where to seek that out.
Because on this page, it does state that the address of this store is 1490 Franklin Road in Berkeley.
And when you have a business, for instance, Facebook here limits your options to identify as a business.
Because you also have @Wolverine State Armory Outdoor Equipment Store as well, in the title part of it.
Again, that's just limiting from the options from the platform.
Okay. Ms. Ward?
I'm looking right now at your Facebook page. And it says, when Wolverine State Armory's Facebook page hits 5,000 likes, we will raffle off this kick-ass package. And you list what will be raffled off. If you're not operating like a store, how can you do this?
That's, that's a online tactic to create followers. The raffling of an item that, that's done in the industry all around, that doesn't even mean, you know, that doesn't mean that the item would be given away here. That could be in any state in the country.
But you're doing it in my neighborhood. I live in that area, so-
What, what in particular reference?
I live on Rosemont.
No, no, I mean that we're doing-
Well-
We're conducting business that was-
That you're having-
Previously approved by the city of Berkeley.
You're conducting basically a gun shop in my neighborhood.
Again, we're licensed dealers, but we are not a shop in, in fashion.
Well-
The only, locally, we facilitate, again, in your packet, there should be a letter from the board, individuals that run the Berkeley Legion. We facilitate their raffles for them for all their fundraising events. So for instance, that's, that would be another raffle that we deal with locally for city fundraising.
This is my second tour of duty on the zoning board of appeals. I was first appointed to this board when it was established back in the 1980s. And I served on it until 1990. I changed jobs and I was no longer able to come to nightly meetings. While I was on the board from, I think it was 1986 until 1990, there was a gun shop that wanted to locate here in Berkeley. And they were looking at the shops that are at 12 Mile and Coolidge, right across from O'Meara's. And-
Do you remember that shop?
We had a number of residents that came from the area that objected to a gun shop. Now, it was going to be in a retail area. And still, the residents objected. They felt that it was much too close to their neighborhood.
It did open though, correct?
And it was turned down. We turned it down.
There was a gun shop at the corner of 12 and Woodward. Or 12 and Coolidge, for a while.
Nope, it was turned down. So anyway, all I'm saying is that you are awfully close in conducting this type of business in a residential area. And we have a number of letters, which we will get to later, that indicate that people are not happy.
The fact that we've been in business now for seven years and everything was approved by the chief of police, Mayor Pro Tem at the time, the then zoning coordinator. Does that, any of that taken into, taken into account?
So, thank you, Madam Chairman.
I have one more, or one just final, final comment earlier. I mean, I guess I'm just going back to the definition where it says, no stock-in-trade or commodities sold shall be kept on the premises. I guess that's what I just keep going by. I'm not, I'm not opposed to guns, so it's not really, I'm just going back to the definition.
So that's part of what we can discuss when we, after we hear from, we get the public comments. So unless we have anything in particular to ask.
Sorry.
No, that, no, it's okay. I'm just trying to make sure we keep it separated, yeah.
I have one more question.
Okay.
Did you say you were both licensed firearms?
Yes, sir.
Same license.
Okay. So if this does not work in your favor here in Berkeley, since he is resident of Oak Park, can you do it in Oak Park?
Oak Park strictly forbids home-based FFLs, says it right on their website. So it's not an option.
We were originally going to do Oak Park, found that out. Applied for manufacturing here, got denied. Applied for the Type 1 dealer, and that's when we were approved.
And, okay, all right.
Anyone else? Okay. So what we will do is we'll go ahead and close this portion. We will open it up to the public. If there is anyone who's attended the meeting and would like to speak on this, we will have them come to the podium. We need them to state their name and address for the record, and then they can comment on this particular matter.
Hi, my name is Mary Glenn. I'm at 1350 Franklin. This is my first time ever doing one of these things, so apologies if it's not elegant. So my husband and I have lived in Berkeley for just about 20 years. We moved here just before we got married, coming up on 20 years in April. We rented for many years before we purchased a home. And when the time came for our home search, staying here was a top priority. We looked at Royal Oak. We looked at Huntington Woods. And they just didn't feel like home to us. So when we, even as renters, we really felt we found our hometown here and we wanted to stay here due to the strong sense of community and neighborliness. We've had the good fortune to have kind, caring, and respectful neighbors the entire 20 years. And we walk around a lot and we've gained the sense that just beyond Franklin, it kind of extends through the whole community. To our mind, good neighbors are those who care about pretty basic responsibilities like maintaining their homes, mowing their grass, planting flowers, shoveling, shoveling snow, and not impinging on the quiet enjoyment of the people who live close by. By that measure, the owners of the property seeking the variance are stellar neighbors. They're utterly innocuous. And our, and we live maybe six houses away from them, down Franklin. In our experience, we've never observed any disruptive behavior, visitors, or noises. They really basically disappear into the background. So we are fully in favor of granting either overturning the city managers or the, the first item before you, or granting the variance. And in a broader context, we think you should think long and hard before taking a course of action, denying the variance, with downstream ripple effects, which could impact any of the other Berkeley residents with home-based businesses like hairdressers. Someone mentioned Etsy, online retail businesses, home-based sales like Cabbie, the clothing. I don't like talking in public, so getting a little worked up here. Or could result in legal expenses, which these owners, you know, should they choose to take this to the court. The city has much larger issues to spend- The city has much larger issues to spend their time on, although this is not insignificant in hearing everything that everyone's had to say. And I know this is not you, but, you know, spring's coming and we're all worried about flooding, so just a note on that one. And then lastly, just please be mindful of the community qualities that we really find to be so special and that make Berkeley a treasure, and just be respectful in return. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else from the audience who wishes to speak, sir? Please approach the podium and state your name and address for the record.
Yes. Good evening. Ryan Coachalone, 1474 Franklin, which, just for reference, is the house immediately east to 1490, the house in resident, or the house in reference. So I've lived at 1474 since June of 2016. I echo the previous commenters. Mr. Noack and his wife have been phenomenal neighbors. I know them well, they're my next door neighbors. I was aware of the business. I'm aware of the nature of the business. Him and I have spoken about it. I have obvious concerns because, as I'm sure most folks here have expressed in some context or another, firearms are a very emotionally charged topic. And I have been reassured and have no reason to disbelieve anything that Mr. Noack told me previously about the nature of the business. I have a sunroom on the south side of my house, which is the street side. I spend a lot of time in there. It's my home gym because I only have so much space in my home. So between my wife and I both, we see the street often. And the only issues we have on our street, honestly, are Amazon deliveries up and down the street. And then the, like, during COVID, grocery deliveries, restaurant deliveries, everything else that seems to jam up the street some. I've never had any kind of parking. I do share road frontage as the immediate next door neighbor to Mr. Noack and can attest that there's never cars parked out front, with the exception of my truck in front of my home. And I park it out there often because I only have a one car with driveway. And my wife actually has to go to work, and I work from home, but sometimes I go in, so I'll spare you the details. But almost daily, I pull my truck out of the driveway, park it on the street in front of my house because I can't park overnight. And I never see cars parked or, you know, a flood of customers or any other indications that there's a home-based business. I'll also echo, Board Member McDonald kind of alluded to this, but as I'm listening here today, this has some implications that I think are far-reaching when we talk about the definition of what a home-based business is. So I think we need to be careful about precedent. In my mind, this now affects anybody that does eBay business out of their home, that does Etsy or any of these other kinds of businesses from their home. Now, we're talking about anybody that has any, whether it's firearms or whether it's fresh baked cookies. If you have stock on site that you're selling to customers, you now have the city manager coming and telling you that you can't do that in your home. That has far-reaching consequences that I think we need to not take lightly.
Okay, thank you.
Can I ask him a question?
Sure.
So, I just, you're, you're right next door. And I'm, I'm just being clear, you would say that this anonymous complaint is crap?
Yes.
So somebody who doesn't have as good a view of you, who decided not to leave their name, put an anonymous complaint, and then this went to the ATF, which went to Berkeley, and then something that he's been doing for seven years or whatever, suddenly he's.
The entire time I've lived there. Yeah, and, and I mean to that.
So, sir, does this just kind of seem like somebody who didn't like guns made a complaint?
Yes, yes, it does. And I'm not, so I'm not, I'm not here taking a stance on guns, right? I'm here defending a neighbor that has a home-based business that I can assure you with absolute certainty creates no traffic issues, no.
Oh, she's got water, I'm sorry.
As a matter of fact, I recently identified some roof damage on his roof through one of my windows that faces his house. Apparently, there was a lightning strike and some work had to be done, but.
So if anybody would know if there was heavy and regular traffic?
I would be the first to know.
Be the first, okay. Thanks.
Can I ask him a question too?
Sure.
Have you seen the, seen where he stores the guns?
No.
You haven't been, you haven't seen a safe or anything?
I've seen a safe before, but I haven't seen his safe, no.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else from the audience who wishes to speak?
1692 Wiltshire. I live right around the corner. I will attest the same thing. I've lived there for 11, 11 years now. And it is, it is very quiet. I think it's just a little sideline for a license he's got going on. And I, I can't imagine anybody having a problem with it. I haven't noticed anything. I mean, there are people who have, you know, cars with trailers in the back and with lawn equipment halfway out the street, all sorts of stuff. But there's never been anything with, with this that you would, that you would regularly know about. Another issue that seems to be a little bit hazy with you guys is I've actually used his service because I couldn't find a specific firearm I was looking for in Michigan without getting severely gouged. So I looked online, I found the same thing in Texas for an SRP, paid for it. And when you pay for a firearm online, you have to mark down what FFL dealer you're going to be, have it shipped to, because they won't ship it to you. You have to have the background check and these kinds of things. And so I asked him if it was okay, and he did, he said, "Sure." I marked it down, Wolverine, shipped it, went over the background check, I signed it, went home, I waited. He said, "Okay, you're ready, come pick it up." And I picked it up, signed something else, and it out of in the house. There's not, like, glass cases full of firearms and he, it's just, all he does is transfer paper. And if you're somebody who doesn't like firearms, which, you know, we don't like, we don't understand, but if you don't like firearms, then you should like what he's doing because it's all a reaction to gun control. He attaches serial numbers to people and, and, and does background checks, extensive ones. I have a license to work at the airport around aircraft, worked, I worked at Rogers. The background check I've done with him was just as rigid. So, and that's pretty much all I have to say. Thank you.
Is there anyone else from the audience who wishes to speak? If not, as indicated, we do have some correspondence that I do need to read into the record. The first one is dated January 10th, and it is from Michael Kennedy and Megan Kennedy. And based on the mailings, I have identified that they reside at 1406 Franklin. And they have indicated that this letter is to comment on the variance that has been requested to operate Wolverine State Armory from the residence of Steve Noack, parcel number 04-25-17-257-009. "We are against a variance to operate a federally licensed firearm dealer at a zoned residential property. We believe that based on the nature of the business and the zoning of the area, that the business should not be given a variance. As noted in the public hearing notice, the community development director did not permit the business, yet the business has been operating for numerous years in this location. A business operating without a permit should not be allowed to continue doing business. It should also be noted that the sign for a public hearing was removed from the property and then had to be reinstalled with a note stating, 'Do not remove.' In addition, we would, we do not like the idea of a federally licensed firearm dealer in our neighborhood. This business has the potential to draw people with weapons into our neighborhood, making it a less safe environment to raise our children. This business might also detour people from moving into the neighborhood, having a negative impact on the housing market for our, our home and others in the neighborhood. We are asking that no variance is permitted and the operation of Wolverine State Armory is permanently suspended from the current location." Next, we have correspondence from Tom Roselitz, and I apologize, Tom, I'm butchering your name, who resides at 1350 Franklin Road. "I am, I am unable to attend the 11, 11 January hearing in person, but I have no objections to the city granting Mr. Steve Noack a variance for his home business. I have been told Mr. Noack may have been conducting business out of his home already, and the activity has been brought to the city's attention. Residents near Mr. Noack's house are more like, most likely to be affected by his business, and they should have the final say as to whether it has been or is likely to become disruptive to them. As for me, from my house about a half a block away, I do not, I have not noticed any issues. My wife and I also walk by Mr. Noack's house regularly, and I've not seen any evidence that business is being conducted there. As I say, I will defer to those who live closer to Mr. Noack to decide if he is being a good neighbor to them or not. I do not object to this business myself. Also, as I interpret the city code section of, of the public hearing notice, the issue in question seems to be the basic one of whether a retail business may be conducted out of a home, not the suitability of the specific business. I am not sure if there is a precedent in Berkeley for granting individual variances to home retail businesses. If, if such variances have been granted in the past, though, I hope Mr. Noack isn't treated differently because his business is firearms, rather than, say, a custom fly fishing rod or handmade soap. Licensed firearm sales business, though possibly distasteful to some, are both legal and heavily regulated under federal law. In my opinion, it would be ironic if Mr. Noack is keeping from having such a business simple because of opposition to what he sells, while the city of Berkeley is in this, is at the same time finalizing plans to allow recreational marijuana and THC-centric businesses that are illegal under federal law and have opponents of their own." Next up is from Mr. Brian Eggers, and he is writing in regards to the requests made at the Berkeley Zoning Board of Appeals about property at 1490 Franklin. "My name is Brian Eggers, and I am a Berkeley resident also living on Franklin Road. I'm unable to attend the appeals meeting on January 11th, but want to send along my comments as a neighborhood, of a neighbor, to the property making the appeal. I agree with the initial decision by the zoning board that businesses operated out of his home does not qualify as a home occupation. The ordinance is very clear that no stock in trade or commodity sold should be kept on premises. However, the statement by the applicant on page 50 of the PDF posted on the city link shows that stock is kept on the present, premises. The applicant states that all items for the business are kept at the home for storage. The applicant even very clearly admits that all items are securely stored. It does not matter how secure the stock is kept, the fact of the matter is stock is kept on the premises. This individual is keeping inventory for their business at their home, and the city ordinance does not allow for this. The house is effectively serving as a warehouse for the owner's business, and I see no possible way that this could be acceptable home occupation under the current zoning ordinance." We have a duplicate letter from the Kennedys. This is from Rosalyn Newberg, who resides at 1455 Franklin Road. "I am the homeowner at 1455 Franklin Road, across the street from Wolverine State Armory. I request that the city not grant the variance so that Wolverine State Armory, a firearms manufacturer and dealer, be able to operate in a residential neighborhood. Firearms manufacturing and dealing does not belong in a residential setting. We request that the zoning board of appeals deny Mr. Noack's request to allow his firearm business to continue to operate in his home." We have correspondence dated July 11th, or January 11th, 2022. It is from Cass Solek, commander and a 35-year-old resident, Dale Haglin, senior vice commander, a 68-year Berkeley resident, and Sean Van Warmer, a financial officer, judge advocate, and eight-year Berkeley resident. "Dear Berkeley zoning board members, we are the senior officers at the Sons of the American Legion Post 374 Detachment of Michigan, SAL, are writing this letter in support of the appeal made by Steve Noack. We had planned to be there in person, but we currently in COVID, but we currently in COVID protocol awaiting tests. We take everyone's health and safety very seriously. Supporting our community and working together has always been the cornerstone of the American Legion. We are proud of the community in which, in which live, work, and volunteer. For those who may be unfamiliar with us, we would like to share a small sample of the annual and one-off events we are proud to partake in. Every year at Berkeley Cruise Fest, we run a beer tent, the hot dog tent, and cook Sunday breakfast. For Cruise Fest, we set up tents and provide parking, food, drink, and entertainment to the public. When Berkeley Public Safety hosts Lids for Kids or the Fire Prevention Open House, we provide lunch to all patrons at no cost. Recently, Berkeley Public Safety hosted a spaghetti dinner fundraiser for a dispatcher to pay medical bills. We, the SAL, paid for the hall and cooked spaghetti. Newly licensed convertible refrigerator and freezer this week. Is that to receive a brand new, I'm sorry. Berkeley Cares pantry is set to receive a brand-new convertible refrigerator freezer this week. A Christmas present from our SAL and auxiliary. We host twice monthly Sunday breakfasts during the school year. We are probably the best known for our Lenten fish fries and our fall steak fries. Every step of the way, we serve our community with man-hours and donations. A big reason we are able to do this is Stephen. Since 2019, we have partnered with him on our annual charity gun raffles. We pull our license from Michigan Charitable Gaming and order the prizes. Stephen is essential in the, in the safe storage and legal transfer of these prizes to the winners. We provide him a winner list and contact information, and he handles the rest. The fact that we never need to take possession of the firearm is, or store them, is essential. We first, we tried at first to partner with big-box stores, but they wanted to profit greatly from it. Not Stephen, he is very supportive of our efforts and understands how every dollar matters and ends up back in the community. Likewise, we are proud to support him and keep these dollars in Berkeley. Beyond SAL business, we have used him personally to facilitate legal firearm transfers. For those unfamiliar, he has no showroom, everything is done by appointment. You make your appointment, show up to handle the paperwork, get the approval, transfer is complete. It is very quick, seamless, and compliant process." Next up, dated January 10th, and this is from homeowners Angela and James Tira at 1490 Dorthia. "We are the homeowners at 1490, one block, and with the same house number for Mr. Noack's home and Wolverine State Armory. We both fully support the city's decision to deny the request for his home occupation as a firearms dealer, and we fully oppose the appeal to allow the business to continue wait, to operate in Mr. Noack's home in the middle of a residential area at the corner of Franklin and Cass. Firearms dealing, including selling to individuals, does not belong in a residential setting. I specifically mentioned our address because we have had some of Mr. Noack's clients knock on our front door to tell us they are here to pick up the firearm they ordered. We tell them to proceed one block north. In short, we request that the zoning board of appeals deny Mr. Noack's request to allow his firearm business to continue to operate in his home." This was dated January 10th, 2022, and it is from Rosalyn Newberg, who resides at 1455 Franklin Road. "I am the homeowner at 1455 Franklin Road, across the street from Wolverine State Armory. I request that the city not grant the variance so that Wolverine State Armory, a firearms manufacturer and dealer, be able to operate in a residential neighborhood. Firearms manufacturing and dealing does not belong in a residential setting. We request that the zoning board of appeals deny Mr. Noack's request to allow his firearm business to continue to operate in his home." Next, dated January 10th, 2022, this is from Jim and Nancy McChesney, who reside at 1491 Wiltshire. "Steve Noack, appeal request and/or variance in regards as to whether the definition of home occupation includes a federally licensed firearm dealer. To the zoning board of appeals, as residents of Berkeley for over 20 years, we had no idea that having a firearm dealer behind our home would be ever, would be, would ever be something that would be real. We are going on record and stating that we do not want the city of Berkeley to grant a variance to Mr. Noack, even if he is a responsible and reputable firearms." a variance to Mr. Noak, even if he is a responsible and reputable firearm dealer. The sale of firearms from a residence in the city could make his home, my home, and our homes and the city an attractive target, and consequently, most likely the victim of crimes or criminal opportunity. And then we have one more. And I do not have a name for this person, but they are residents at 144 Franklin. I recently received a public notice hearing that is scheduled for January eleventh, 2022, at seven oh five PM. Unfortunately, I am unable to attend this hearing, therefore I am commenting in writing. This request for a licensed firearm dealer in a residential location, in my opinion, is unforgettable, is an unforgettable feeling of safety. That's not to say a potentially dangerous situation in the entire residential area. More importantly, how would the city of Berkeley monitor the coming and goings of potential buyers at this residence? Too many questions and too many issues surround this application for variance. Franklin Road, where this residence is located, is a traffic hazard as it is because of the turnaround at the Woodward Corner. Allowing this, this residence to become a licensed firearm dealer will only create more traffic havoc safety than we see every day, so therefore, I am asking that this request for a variance be denied, and I sincerely hope the board of appeals will do the same. I think that's all the correspondence we had.
Yes.
Okay, so at this point, given all the correspondence we have, I will turn it back over to my fellow ZBA members for discussion on whether or not, and once again, we are interpreting, we are, we are determining if the petitioner's appeal and interpretation of Mr. Baumgartner's decision should be, I apologize. Uh-oh, I had the note somewhere. Should be appeal affirmed, denied, or modified.
Affirm, reverse.
Reverse, sorry. I had, I had it all written down here, and I lost that piece of paper. So that is what we are determining, and, and I want to make sure that we, this is more a decision of whether or not this is, this is a particular use based upon the ordinance that we have in place. So I want to make sure, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, but we are not setting a precedent here. There is already an existing ordinance, so any of those people that are operating those type of businesses, this does not impact them because it's already in place. We're not changing what's in place.
You're, you're not changing the definition of home occupation. What you're doing is saying whether this particular use at this particular site with the circumstances that were presented to you fits the definition of home occupation, and using that as a basis as to whether you affirm, reverse, or modify Mr. Baumgartner's decision. In some ways, though, I will say that your decision will set precedent, because this is not the first FFL dealer that has applied, and so there may be some in the future that would come, and so you would set precedent based on that. You would also, in your interpretation of it, perhaps set precedent for other home-based businesses, like the different ones that folks have mentioned, whether it be balloons or Etsy or whatnot. However, it's your job to interpret this definition, not change this definition. The job of changing the definition would follow the planning commission upon recommendation and city council as the, as the body that would approve that.
Okay.
Has that helped?
Yes, I just want to make it very clear that we are, we are not, we are not changing something, we are, we are interpreting what has been decided.
Yes.
And the fact that this particular operation has been going on for seven years, it was determined back in 2014 that this particular request was okay to operate out of this home, but it is an interpretation.
Right, and Madam Chair, can I add one thing?
Sure.
As you know, I'm a consultant in car law enforcement and have worked in other municipalities. In a capacity as a zoning administrator in other municipality, I have been asked to sign off on a similar use, and what it was, was a form where I checked a box, very similar to the same forms that you get as a zoning administrator from the state, when they're asking about a used car dealership or some other type of automotive uses. So I want to say that it wouldn't be unusual that there might not be a record, because at that, the fact that the license was given does state that somebody at the city signed off at the time. We just wanted to be explicit that when we went through the records, we didn't see anything that was in there. But if it had been an interview, there might not necessarily have been a paper trail at that time. I know myself personally, I had to check a box, and I don't think it was the policy of the municipality. I was at the time to make a copy of that and keep a copy in the, in the property file.
Okay, thank you for that. Okay, so I'm going to open it up. Mr. Willner, if you'd like to start.
I have a question, and it might be for Megan. So I noticed in the packet, there's a letter in here, so that, from the owner of the home. So it sounds like the applicant is the, is renting the home.
I would ask that to the applicant. I think that may have been the case when he, when, when he applied, but today I checked with, with building, and they didn't have a landlord, landlord license on record for that building.
He was leased the own when we originally applied, I believe a year or less after we were approved for the application. I purchased the home. I've been the owner for quite a few years.
Are you on, you are?
Yes, I do. I own the home and reside there.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else have any comments or questions or statements they'd like to make?
On the question of affirming or reversing or modifying, it's really immaterial what is being sold here. It could be Beanie Babies, it could be fishing lures, it could be anything, but the question is whether or not this, the retail nature of this, as their Facebook page might suggest, or as their Google listing might suggest, if they are operating as a retail outlet with whatever they're selling. And, well, the, I understand about the Facebook page that they give you limited, limited topics, and I understand Google does the same thing. I've had some experience with my business with that as well, but I don't really see them operating as a retail outlet. I may be wrong, I'm not sure what the rest of my board members would say, but I don't see this being the actual sale. They're doing the paperwork, they're mostly a licensing and storage facility for somebody else's sale. I'm not sure how that violates the ordinance. If we affirm the city manager's ruling, doing this if you're selling BB Babies or, or Afghan blankets or whatever is, is still against the law. If you came up to, if, if something happened and there was a complaint made, then yeah, that would be, that would bring this to the city, and you wouldn't be able to sell whatever you were able to sell. Reversing this again wouldn't change the ordinance for other operators of home-based businesses, it's just ruling on this one particular property. Modifying might be, might set a precedent if we make some modifications. That's just where, that's just where I see it from the, from the evidence presented, but...
I'll make a comment. So while I, I agree wholeheartedly, it doesn't matter, it's not about what's, what the item is, and I, and I do agree that I don't think it's, that they're acting as a retail business. I guess the part that gets me, and it doesn't matter what it, what it is, is that it says in here, "No stock in trade or commodity sold should be kept on the premises," which they are kept on the premises, so, and, and maybe I'm, maybe I'm interpreting it differently or too literally, but I guess that's the only piece I, I would have issue with.
But they're not trading it or selling it.
But it's a sold, it is sold, it was sold, they did buy it. I mean, they bought it, maybe he didn't sell it, but it's a sold commodity, and, and he's holding it for them and then giving...
But the sale didn't occur at the premises.
Well, it doesn't say had to occur, it just said kept on the premises, so.
Okay.
Mr. Krug?
Well, I'm thinking in this instance, correct me if I'm wrong, but Wolverine does not own this gun. They're strictly holding it. Somebody else owns it, they're holding it until that paperwork is processed properly. So when it comes to holding, I'm thinking of holding stock is something that you own and you're going to turn around and sell it again, which, in my opinion, is not happening here.
Yeah, I mean, maybe if I had the word transferred, maybe that would be different, so it doesn't say transferred, so, yeah, in that sense. Technically, technically, yes, technically, they are, they are selling.
This is the, this is the actual wording from the zoning code, section 138-32. So all of this is from the code.
So I, I mean, a couple of things that I'd like to draw to the board's attention is, number one, I, I found the applicant very credible when he was describing, you know, his interactions with previous Berkeley officials, and I don't have any reason, and based on what staff just gave us, it seems as if Berkeley approved this. So then we have a situation where you have an anonymous complaint, which by every fact presented to the panel is a false anonymous complaint about heavy traffic, and then we have a Berkeley official that essentially reverses the course of what has been the status quo for seven years. And I don't like guns. I mean, I'm, you know, this is a political thing, and, you know, I know it's that I would normally fall on, but it's just, it, it just smells, it's like...
But it shouldn't be about the gun, it should be about...
Right, it seems like it's about the gun. That's, that's, everything about this points that somebody had a problem that this is guns, and even though he's been allowed to do it for this long, and people in Berkeley told him he was allowed to do it, because it's guns, and guns are an issue right now, Berkeley seems to be reversed. And I'm looking at the letter, Mr. Baumgartner's letter, it says, "Based on conversations with the property owner at 1490 Franklin, the business Wolverine State Armory is considered a retail business." Okay, so he's saying his reason for his ruling is something that he spoke of with the applicant, and that says, "The nature of the business includes the in-person purchase and transfer of ownership of materials." Well, I'm pretty sure he didn't tell him that, I mean, Mr. Baumgartner doesn't say that he told him that, he didn't tell us that, so I...
I never spoke to Mr. Baumgartner once. I tried reaching out to him many times, and never got a response.
That, that, that is extremely problematic for me, that the ruling that we're being asked on is saying that this man is, is, he's saying, he's, he had conversations, the applicant's saying he never talked to him, and that sounds credible to me, so.
I agree a hundred percent. I mean, that's, that's a person we should be able to...
You know, so, I don't know, it's, it's, it's wild, it's, you know, and, and I, I try to think of it, other things, too. So like, what, what if he was fixing guns? So what if you were sending him a gun, he was fixing it? He'd still have all the guns there, right? We wouldn't think he was selling it then, we wouldn't necessarily have a problem with it then.
Yeah, to me, it's not about the, I'm, I'm, I am not opposed to guns, so, I mean, I'm a gun owner, I'm a hunter, so it's not about the gun for me, and so it was about the wording, and, and yeah, maybe...
But, but, and then, on the other side, I will also say, the Facebook page is problematic. I mean, you, you look at that, and the general Joe Schmo would get the view of, hey, man, these guys will get me the gun I want. I mean, that's, that's kind of the ring of it, and so that's, I don't like that, and then the only thing in, of these materials that really bothered me from the community was the one, the person who says they have the same address and people are coming to their door, which doesn't seem like it'd be too great. But I, you know, I, if, if what we're doing is reviewing, I don't, I don't think Mr. Baumgartner's letter has provided us a sufficient factual basis to, to support his decision. I mean, he, he's saying he's basing it on conversations that we have no evidence ever took place. I mean, I don't know if he's relaying, did, did, do you, who, who spoke with him from the city? Is, is he just, is Mr. Baumgartner just by hearsay saying this is what happened?
I believe what happened was that this was, to the, that letter is dated in November, during the transition when Erin was leaving, Erin Schluto was leaving the city, so she may have provided him updates on her conversations with the applicant, and then maybe there was a cut-and-paste situation in terms of the letter. I can always go back and ask for more details.
This, this, this letter, to me, doesn't seem like it's based on factual findings. I mean, it seems like it's...
It's, he's saying one thing, and he's saying completely, the complete opposite, so it's, it's misinformation one, somewhere, I mean...
So, so like, if this letter said, you know, Wolverine Armory is holding itself out all over the internet, and we have these citizens who have seen signs where they're trying to sell guns, and, you know, we have reports from citizens that they're trying to sell guns, and based on that, this is a retail business, you know, I'd, I'd, I'd be like, okay, I think I got to go with Mr. Baumgartner, Baumgartner, but when it's just saying, you know, somebody talked to him, but they got that wrong, and based on conver, I don't, how could you base it on the conversations with him? How would that support that he's selling stuff? I, he just, I don't know, I'm rambling.
Mr. McFaul?
Yes, I just, you know, again, I have flip-flopped a couple of times based on the commodities, as like you were saying, but I do agree that it is, it is a commodity that's just being transferred and the paperwork is being handled. So when I reread it and reread it, I, again, I don't see an issue that it's a retail sell or resell situation, and then when it comes to the traffic, what traveled with the anonymous letter or people that complained about that, again, there's nothing in the ordinance that has anything pertaining to that either. So that's just, I just wanted to make that point. Oh, I have one other point. You might want to clean up the website, you know, make it be very specific about that you're transfer-only, that you're not buying and selling guns.
And the first thing you see should be...
That's just my opinion.
A pinned tweet from 2015 raffling off a silencer, that kind of carries the wrong vibe, I think.
Well, to that point, I, I do, I did print a copy of the, the homepage on their website, and it says Wolverine State Armory is a veteran-owned small business operating out of Berkeley. Michigan, we specialize in online transfers from third-party sellers and FFL transfers. WSA can also special order almost any firearm or NFA item on the market for direct sale. Aside from sales and transfers, WSA provides top-notch armor services to most modern firearms. If you have any questions regarding our sales or services, please reach out via our contact page or email us.
Direct sales.
Direct sales.
And, and that's why, sure, you can just go to their website as well.
Is this the, the website, or is this the, the Facebook?
No, I, I, it's wolvereinstatearmory.com, and I just printed it.
It says sales and transfers.
Well, it, it's been, sorry, we, this is our point to determine, to discuss.
It says sales and transfers and direct sales.
It says direct sales.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I want to also emphasize to the group, there's, you can affirm, reverse, or modify. So the modify can come with conditions that you might use in a variance, and those possibly, you know, could include how the business is advertised. So then it would be, once that, if, so keep that in mind.
Okay.
Yeah, that's not phrase good.
Anyone else have any comments or questions?
Well, I, based on that, I mean, how would everybody feel about... Well, I, based on that, I mean, how would everybody feel about?
Modify?
About, about modifying it, the, so, well, so what can we, how, how can we modify? We can modify saying that it's a permitted use, as long as it, I mean, that seems like it's a.
Well, we have two areas that we have to tackle. One is whether or not we are going to, um, abide by, um, the zoning officer, Mr. Baumgartner. Or we're going to reverse it, or we're going to modify it. Then, we have to tackle the issue of use. Correct.
I, I would.
Not if we, not if we, not if we reverse him in the first case.
If you reverse, yes, okay.
Not if you reverse or modify.
Right.
Right. But if you, uh.
Affirmed.
Affirm, then.
So, modi-.
Yeah.
Modification could be that the petitioner is claiming that this is, his main business is the transfer and paperwork for already sold items. And that, but it contradicted on the website that there are, that they could direct sale.
Uh-huh.
And so, the modification would be that, uh, we revert, reverse, but that the modification would be that no direct sales would be, uh.
Permitted.
Permitted. No, no direct.
Is that, am I getting that right?
No, no direct sales, and that their website and Facebook page contain a disclaimer.
Can we ask him about this? I mean.
A disclaimer.
Yeah.
Saying we, we do not offer direct sales.
From this location.
From this, for, direct sales through Wolverine Armory. And that the Facebook page, Google, and contain a disclaimer.
I, I guess, um, we can absolutely entertain that. Where I struggle is who in six months is going to go back and look at his website to ensure.
That's being done.
It is not changed back, or there's not some kind of other wordsmithing that is done that gives people the idea, um, that they, that they do this. Um, so that, that's just one thing I, I question is.
We're not going to police it. Can we ask him why they wrote that?
What, is there an application for a home business that has to be renewed all the time? Isn't that renewal process where they check and make sure?
The applicant has stated that the renewal process is once every three years.
Yeah, and then they would see that there was a modi-.
But nothing with us.
Well, there was a modification done by us, and therefore, and a renewal, they would have to.
And that could be forwarded.
Would have to be, you know, subject to what is their website currently saying, or.
I think whatever is decided by the board would, would be shared, not only with the applicant, but with the ATF, since they have an application and an active license. And what, uh, in correspondence from the ATF is, seems clear that while they have a range of uses that are allowed by a License One, um, a, a type-one license, the city zoning can further.
Supercede that.
Well, supersede, but also to, to further limit the uses that would be allowed underneath that. Um, and so, if you chose to go in that direction, I would feel that as the zoning, as, as the community, inter- community development officer, the development director, I would be beholden to share that information with the ATF. They would keep it on file. Um, but also to keep very clear records, knowing that I'm interim, um, and so that it'd be clear to the next community development director, and hopefully, down the line.
So, another thing I, I, I just, I question, and, and this is a very touchy subject. It also says on page four of our packet, that the key question is whether the home occupation of a particular business, Wolverine State Armory, is a retail use. In his application, the applicant states that no items are purchased or traded on the premises. However, in correspondence with the ATF, an officer described the general nature of the license and was, as one that allows customers to come to the home to fill out required federal paperwork, including a background check, and then to pick up the firearms at the home, since federal law prohibits the license from shipping firearms directly to non-residents. While it is clear that the material is stored onsite, it is unclear if the firearms are picked up at this address. So, I guess, if we did confirm that there are people that are purchasing them locally and picking them up at the address, would that change this correspondence, or the, the, what is written in this correspondence from the ATF? And I don't think we know the answer to that.
And, and I think, in terms of the ATF, I, I think also that was what I was trying to summarize before, is that they said, this is what the general license is, but if your zoning can further limit the uses, or you, as your decision, whether it be a variance, or a modification of an appeal, or an extension of the zoning ordinance. So, um, so I would say, yes, you have that ability to further winnow down what the uses are. Um, and then that would be shared with the ATF, but I think that would also set some precedent for any future FFL licensees coming through. I think what I'm hearing from the board is the key thing is that it seems like this is not necessarily, what you're saying is it's not necessarily a retail use, because it's the item is being held and then transferred. It is not actually being sold at that time. And I think that's, if you make a motion in any way, shape, or form to modify, or to, um, rescind, is that it?
Uh, affirm, reverse, or modify.
To modify or reverse, that, that distinction is made clear as to why that fit. Why then this home-based business, as it's conducted, um, fits, you know, fits this, the definition of home occupation. Because I think that is a subtlety that wasn't in Mr. Baumgartner's letter, or Mr. McNeil, Mr. McNeil's letter?
McLaren.
McLaren, thank you, um, on the sun- null application.
See, I, I feel like we don't, I feel like we're doing our own fact-finding, which is like, I don't think that's really what we're supposed to be doing necessarily. Like, we're, we're investigating to try to figure out exactly what's going on there, which.
Well, let me ask you, so it says also on page four, that after a public hearing, the board must reach a decision within ninety days of the public hearing. So, in a sense, we have ninety days from tonight to decide whether, to decide whether we should affirm, reverse, or modify.
Right. And, and if you tabled, and you needed more information, such a, and, and gave direction as to more information, then I can absolutely get this. I think you were also in a unique circumstance, unfortunately, in that you've had a change in community development director, you've had three different community development directors. Who have weighed in on this, um, and then I don't have this historical context, for which I apologize, um, and can absolutely take some more time to investigate this. It's just that the applicant brought the, you know, brought, brought this forward. I think that there are some, I think also, there are some licensing issues and timelines. Um, and then, um, so, you know, I, I know that's one of the reasons when he and I talked on the phone, as to bringing this forward at this time. So, in terms of asking for an interpretation, appeal, and use variance.
So, did I not see in here, though, that, that at this point, since this is not approved, he still has a certain amount of time to continue to operate in the fashion he is? And it's not as if we don't rule today that he is shut down?
No. But there might be ATF, there might be, you might want to ask the applicant, there might be ATF?
I thought I read it in here.
There was a letter somewhere within our study.
Yeah, that said something about six months.
I believe he had six months.
Yeah.
Working on a letter of authorization, which states six months from November eleventh, I believe. It's actually our third one. We've been waiting for this approval from zoning for almost a year now. Um, and our license expired early of last year, and, uh, we've been, Ms. Schluto's been pushing it off, pushing it off. So, the ATF is, has been requesting this, um, response, again, for about a year now.
So, from November, you'd have, sorry.
Six months.
Six months. Though, they will, in regards to that six months, in the nature of the business, um, and the timeline, they will keep extending it upwards until all paperwork's processed, which could be upwards of fifteen months or more. But in regards to how long this has been going on, it's about a year now, that the ATF's been waiting for a, uh, response.
But I want to make it very clear, it's not as if the zoning board of appeals has sat on this for one year. It has sat in the city, who is in charge of interpreting and approving this application.
Yeah, it was with, it was with Erin, yes, yes.
Can we ask an additional question since he's up here? So, sir, what is your explanation for this sentence? "WSA can also special order almost any firearm or NFA item on the market for direct sale. Aside from sales and transfers, WSA provides top-notch armor services to most modern firearms."
Uh, we've done no armory services, um, for some time, that is enlisted under the FFL. Uh, in regards to direct sales, the initial business model, we wanted to, again, this is very old content, um, extremely old. Uh, the initial business model, besides transfers, was to do dropship items. Um, actually, never having product in hand, and having third-party companies ship out to other FFLs. Uh, we never actually got into that, so it's just.
Have you ever done a direct sale?
What's that?
Have you ever done a direct sale?
In the past. I haven't done a direct sale in years and years.
How recently?
It's been years. I don't even have any, I don't even have any products to sell. Um, I don't carry any inventory. Um, any direct sale in the past would have been, uh, again, years ago, and that was for, um. Either a.
Website created?
I honestly don't know. I did not create it. It's been quite a while.
So, is this not your website that we're looking at?
No, it's my website. I did not create it. It's, I honestly can't remember when it was made.
Did you review and approve the copy?
I did not, actually.
Did your business partner create the, uh, website?
I did.
I would note that, you know, all the customer reviews on Facebook, none of them describe buying guns. It's all the, the paperwork type stuff. So, it seems as if the people leaving reviews on Facebook seem to know that he's not selling them guns.
Again, today I had.
And there were testimonies also in, positively, that their company does, that is their business, you know, from American Legion and so forth, so.
I've had people today email me, asking if I could, if we had anything in stock, and anytime anyone asks me, I very blatantly tell them, we do not carry any inventory.
So, have you ever asked them why they would reach out to you and inquire about a sale, and where they, just so you can understand where that's coming from?
The majority of these people are just looking for items, because everything's sold out everywhere, honestly, you know. We don't list ammo, and one of our biggest requests is ammunition, and we've never sold ammunition, ever.
So, you wouldn't have problems changing your website from direct sales?
Not at all.
So, if we want to make a decision, like, and use the ninety days or whatever, what do we do now? We would, say we table it, or would we?
You would table it, and then, um, if there was more information that you needed, then, um, I would ask that you would um, give specific direction to either myself, if it's through the city, or, um, to the applicant, if there is something additional needed from, from that point of view.
Do we need any more information?
I mean, like, clarification on a letter from Mr. Baumgartner.
I, I guess, go ahead.
No.
No, I was, I was just thinking that if that is the path we go on, um, maybe it is best if we all think about this, and then we provide any questions or further clarification we need, we could send in writing to you. I mean, I don't know that we have all, all of them right now off the top of our head. Um, but then we could then give them to Megan, and we, we could follow up, and you could then combine any community, I mean, we could go ahead and list some questions we have today.
Mm-hmm.
Personally, I would like any and all information about how that letter was derived at by Mr. Baumgartner. Like, who had the conversations, what the notes are of the conversations.
I agree.
And then.
Any correspondence, I think.
Yeah, in terms of the applicant, I, I would assume that he's got records in terms of what he's doing. Like, if you could show records that establish there's been no direct sales since two thousand seventeen, that would be pretty neat.
Have you, has there been any direct sales you've done since two thousand seventeen?
Not that I could think of. I mean, I haven't placed any orders, um, so, you know. Anything that was sold, um, would have been shipped out anyway, and profited that way. So, it wouldn't have been even been on premises.
Sir, I'm sorry, we've closed the public comment, so at this point, um, it is just for our discussion. It's not that we're ignoring you. Okay, Mr. Benson?
One of the questions I'd like asked, if we, if we did table this, and needed further information, is would it be possible to the licenses for three years? Would it be possible to change that to, to one year?
No.
To determine that?
I believe the license is from the ATF, so therefore, we have to operate under their.
But as far, as far as the home-based business permit, is there, there's a permit for a home-based business?
No, there's not a permit for a home-based business. There's a permit for, uh, there's business permits, um, for commercial or industrial, something that's not a home-based business.
I specifically asked Ms. Vanson if I needed a permit and requested.
Okay.
So, I'd have some, something saying that we're a home-based.
I just want to see if there's some way that we, that if we do set conditions, like no direct sales, that, that we have some way of making sure that you're complying, and then.
She, uh, she informed me that, um, yeah, I would not need a permit. I guess with.
I think the most challenging part is you, you're, you're referencing a conversation that we have no documentation whatsoever on, and she is no longer here. So, we have to go on what we have.
Yes.
There is actually, let me ask this, so there is a letter here where you're referencing, this is, there's no date on it, but it says, "As discussed with Amy Vanson and Dan Turb- Turbrack a few months ago, the ATF should be contacting zoning in regards to approved FFL permit. As we discussed earlier, this is the modified permit without manufacturing." Who is this letter to? It, it looks like it's written by you, and it's to steensone38@gmail.com, or?
Oh, that's a personal email. Um, I have to be more specific of which portion.
I don't, I just, I don't know, oh, is this, maybe this is the, is this the ATF guy writing to you? Is that?
What, it would.
I think it was the original, uh, application from.
Two thousand seventeen.
Right, but it's, it's, it's referencing a conversation he had with Amy and Dan Turbrack, so it's not like.
Oh, is that with the file of the original application?
Yeah, I think that was the original application.
That was the original application with explanation of items, the original application.
It's page twenty-two of thirty-five.
Yeah, so it says, yeah, so this is, "As discussed with Amy Vanson and Dan Turbrack a few months ago, the ATF should be contacting zoning in regards to our approved FFL permit." As, as we discussed earlier, this is the modified permit without manufacturing, and will be used for an online e-commerce website.
This is the ATF investigator emailing you, sir? Is that what this is? Or, I don't.
We're trying to find the.
It's this, it looks like this.
These is Steve, hold there.
This, is this right here?
Yeah, I think it is from the vest, investigator Nichols.
It's just confusing. I think it's from investigator Nichols to the applicant.
Two Stees, one thirty-eight, yeah.
Associated with my, uh, FFL, so, that would be.
Then who is investigator Nichols? Who has your email, what is, and a phone number here?
That was in the file folder.
This must have been from, uh, previous EPF, I, oh, this is in the original application?
We have no, this is all we have, so we have no context of.
Yeah, there's no dates on that, it's just.
There's not even his email, or to, or from, or times, or anything.
Yeah, it's weird.
I believe that was in the property file.
But still no context is to.
No.
So, this also says an online e-commerce website.
That must have been an original file from the original application with the EPF agent. from the original application with the ATF agent.
Anyway, I guess I just think that those, I mean, there is some documentation that they were clearly all, people were talking to the city of Berkeley at the time.
And I guess I question, what was Dan Turberek's role in all of this?
Yeah.
Yeah.
He was mayor pro tem at the time.
So why wasn't the, I mean, why, why was the mayor even involved? This is...
Right.
A zoning situation. I would have expected Amy and the city manager to be in communication regarding this.
Yeah.
Possible mayor, mayor pro tem at the time was the initial contact or something.
Yeah, the ATF usually tries to reach out to the mayors as well.
But we have nothing from a city manager. Who was the serving city manager? I'm sorry, I didn't even know what this, 2014. Was it Jane?
Yeah, it would have been Jane, I think.
So one of my other questions is, once again, going back to that paragraph that's on page four. While it is clear that the material is stored, it is unclear if the firearms are picked up at this address. So if the firearms are picked up at this address, then does that change the ATF officer's description of the nature of this license?
The license itself, there's, the ATF only has one definition of this license.
Well, I'm just saying here, they, they are saying it is unclear whether the materials is stored.
I think, I'm saying, I was saying it was unclear as to whether the...
Okay, okay.
Material, you know, is picked up on the site. I think the applicant has stated that...
They do.
People are picking it up at the site.
I thought, I thought they were saying that they did not understand versus, Austin didn't understand, okay.
Yeah, no, that, I'm sorry.
Nope, that's okay.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I, I tend to agree with Mr. Euler that we don't have enough information tonight to make a decision. And since we have 90 days, perhaps before the next meeting, we might get some additional information from the city manager as well as any clarification from the applicant. And that we can table this matter for next month.
Which then would be February 8th, am I correct? Would be our next, or no, February 7th. I'm sorry, we would go back to our Monday.
We would go back to Monday, yes.
So if that is the case, I don't know if you or Mr. Euler would like to make that a motion, and then we would just need a support and a roll call vote to determine whether or not we should, or whether or not we should act this evening, I guess, is, is...
I respectfully disagree. I think we do have enough information where we could actually vote on this and with a modification to the sale, no sale, and no sale advertising. That's just my opinion.
I, I guess I don't necessarily disagree with that, but I just, we have to have it actually phrased. And that, it just seems like a very difficult thing to write off the...
I think, I tend to agree.
You can articulate it in a way that...
My question is, though, articulating it, and then I think we're also under an obligation to determine how it is monitored and enforced. And if he does not follow those guidelines, then what happens? But who also...
Well, we're not in the enforcement.
No, but I, but I do think we have to be able to answer that question. I feel, I feel we have to be able to answer that question of, and that could be part of the modification, like, the modification could include that type of language.
Would it be possible to do, like, maybe a rough draft of what we want, we'd like the, of what we'd like the modification to read? And then, and then submit that to Corporation Council to get their approval, to make sure it's kosher?
Mr. Gesund, is it possible that perhaps staff might be able to write something that would be used by the board and that she, as well as the city manager, would pass it by Corporation Council?
Okay.
I think I would also ask that we get some additional clarification from Mr. Baumgarten on the history of this.
Yeah.
So that we can feel more comfortable or determine that his letter was, was, you know, not as a result of a direct conversation.
So Madam Chair, can I, I sum up? The feeling of the board seems to be a motion to table this until your next meeting in February with request to staff to consult with the city manager about the information on the creation of the letter that's in question on the appeal. And then also for staff to draft a motion.
Incorporating the modifications.
Incorporating the modifications discussed tonight, dealing with direct sales. And that it's a transfer of goods, not a sale of goods. And that that be reviewed by Corporation Council. And then the last thing I would ask is that included in that motion is you want written information from the applicant about direct sales by Wolverine State Armory since 2017.
I, I think we need a commitment from the owner that there will be no direct sales.
Is there a way to incorporate some kind of document that he also signs, it's in the, in the file, that that will not be happening? And I don't know, maybe that's something we could also explore.
I think that's something to explore with Corporation Council and to ask about, and then maybe to add to the list of staff to talk to the city manager and to the Corporation Council about is what measures are available to the Board of Zoning Appeals in order to ensure, in order to monitor, ensure compliance with anything that, any conditions in the modification.
How does everyone feel about that?
Yeah, I think that would be a good direction.
All right.
Okay, so now we can have a motion that basically states everything that Megan just said that we need and a support and a roll call to make sure that we can clarify the things that we need and get the other pieces in place if we were to move forward with the modification.
I will move that we table this issue and that the specifics of the tabling motion will include everything that Megan just reiterated.
One second.
All right, roll call vote, Gesund?
Yes.
Krug?
Yes.
McAlpine?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Euler?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Wilner?
Yes.
Motion carries. So with that, I think that also has the interpretation and the use variance together in that tabling, so...
Do we need a motion on that as well?
On the use variance, I don't think so. You've made a motion on the case overall.
Perfect, okay, that's what I thought, okay. All right, so we will be back in touch.
Okay, so I'll just be hearing from you? Thank you.
So next up on our agenda is other business. Is there any other, other business that we need to discuss?
I have a request, Madam Chair. And this is to staff. It would be nice to have a list of the board members, the alternates, and contact information. I know other communities for their boards and commissions provide that information. And it would be certainly nice to have that for future reference. It would be proprietary, not something that we would run out and share on the corner of 12 Mile and Coolidge. But I think it's something internally that we need.
Thanks, I will, I will tell you, I think that's possible, but I, I'm learning every day that maybe what I think is not possible, so I will...
Can we explore that, please?
Yeah, and the only, yes, and the only caveat I would say is that...
Exparte, we would, we would have to include some kind of document that, that states that we are not communicating and violating the ex parte communication.
Or the, or, or the Open Meetings Act.
Right, right. I did try to respond to Megan's note today, and I was not allowed to. So I believe that that probably is put in place to prevent that exactly from happening, which makes total sense. Okay, any, any other, other business?
Madam Chairman, I have another. I happened to be up at the Berkeley Post Office before Christmas, and there was a lovely young lady there. Her name was Michelle. And Michelle unfortunately recognized me. And she goes, "Oh, I know you. You're on TV." And I'm like, "Oh, God." I looked like the wrath of God. But anyway, she said she is a postal clerk. She works in the Clausen Post Office. But because Berkeley was shorthanded, they had shifted her over to the Berkeley Post Office. She watches us faithfully when we are on. So kudos to Michelle. Thank you so much for your viewership.
All right, if there is no other, other business, I will refer to Megan and see if there's any kind of staff or board member report.
Included in your packet was the community development report from November and December. I will leave it at that. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you had about that report.
Okay, and then, any questions on that from anyone? Next up would be the liaison report. And Mr. Henning did communicate with both of us that he felt, given COVID protocols and trying to limit the number of people who were in attendance, that he would, he would not be attending today's meeting. And in addition, he had nothing to report. So that is the reason he is not here this evening. Next up is public comments. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak? If not, I will go ahead and adjourn the meeting at 9:42. Thank you, everyone.